Regular school committee meeting to order. Committee man Welsh, if you'll lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
School committee chair report, I have none to report. Resource committee.
No resource committee report, but school building needs. We met on the 29th. We approved the meetings from our January meeting. We went over the school department's capital budget needs, of which they are extensive. It's actually about $2.5 million worth of repairs that are needed throughout the school system. Repairs and updating. Mr. Jokola put the gate for the school building subcommittee and all of the information on all the schools, on their rating, whether it's fair, poor, excellent, good, you know, and so that was quite an extensive meeting. We had a security update and a letter from Captain Lemay. In Captain Lemay's letter, he was generally pleased with our schools, the safety in our schools. He could not get into any building, he had to have himself rung in, so we were very pleased with that. We were given an update on the insurance claim from Crocker and Long Joe and FHS. Again, we went over some of the capital projects which are on tonight, such as Long Joe Roof, Vacuum Condenser Pump and Steam Trap Survey, and an update on the Crocker MSBA project.
Any comments, questions?
Yeah, one comment. I think, and again, the superintendent has been so good about updating and correlating, you know, I think it's important for, you know, all of us to remember, and everyone out there to know, that we've taken our buildings so seriously over the last, you know, decade plus. And I was at the convention this weekend and had a chance to talk to other school committee members from other districts. There's no other facility subcommittee, there's no other building need subcommittee existing that I'm hearing about in any of our surrounding communities. I find that amazing, because again, buildings are the biggest number one issue, but I'm so proud of us and the fact that we're on top of this, and that we are organized and we have a system and we have a plan. Because when I asked a couple of school committee members from a pretty good sized community, and I said, "You don't have this, so what's going on with your buildings?" And they went, like, they gave this shrug. And I thought, "Ooh, I'm glad I'm not that person shrugging," you know, "I'm glad that we know." So I just want to make that comment, because Bob has done an absolutely superlative job with, you know, with Tom and with Andre, to keeping track of this. And again, the mayor's leadership has made such a difference. So we're moving in the right direction, and we gotta keep moving, which we are doing, and we know what we're doing, which not everyone does in their community.
One of the comments that Bob made even today as we were meeting, what happened to Crocker Elementary School was not unique. There were over 200 claims to the insurance company that we used from the storm this past winter. So what happened to us was not unique. It happened to quite a few schools in Massachusetts. Any, I don't know if they want to add to that, Bob?
Yeah, the, my, who's our insurance company, they had 200 claims, there were new buildings, old buildings, that were impacted by the record cold over that 10-day stretch, the coldest 10-day stretch in 30 years. So really is not a function of age. And, you know, they're in the process of fixing a lot of these schools, as now they're going to be starting work on Crocker tomorrow, coincidentally. So, you know, we are not alone.
Yes. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Just to add in that meeting, we also planned for tours of all the buildings by school committee members and Pittsburgh Public School staff at the close of school this year. So that'll be good to be able to do. And the other thing we talked about in that meeting was to reiterate to staff in the Pittsburgh Public Schools how important it is for them to complete the room inventory forms. So I just wanted to say that.
They're good. I'd forgotten that.
Policy committee, Ms. Cregan.
So we had a, we've had two meetings in the last, I'm gonna say, two and a half weeks. So last week we met. You have before you a new smoking policy, a non-discrimination and non-harassment policy, and we have a relations with the police authorities meeting, and I want to thank the chief for coming to our policy meeting to really take us through something that makes our relationship with the police, who are our partners, who are, you know, there to support our, the work of our school staff, and help our students to, you know, again, keeping everyone safe. And I want to thank Rosemary Reynolds, who has gone through, and we're gonna give you another tweak for the second reading, sorry, when we adopt it. So we've got, we've got some stuff to add, but we have it before us on our, on our agenda tonight. So, yep.
Okay, questions?
I, well, I just have a little report to make. So I went through this non-discrimination and harassment paper, and I noticed a semantic inconsistency that, as to how it was referred to, these things were referred to in paragraph, line by line. And so I'm gonna pass out the corrected, although we'll go through it again to make sure it's altered corrected. So maybe you could pass this around, the corrected one. As well as that, I checked with the state on, on this protected, protected individuals for, from non-discrimination and non-harassment. And I have a list here of 15 things that the state considers, and we're gonna, we're going to look over that, I'll pass that around as well, in the next meeting and see what we want to adopt, what we choose to adopt for ourselves.
So to that effect, are we on a time crunch for non-discrimination and non-harassment?
Yeah, you had talked about.
Yes. Well, from our, like, from our updating policy, it would be great to have it done, but it's not.
We have something to play.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Okay, then we can, what we can do is we can, we can vote in favor of what we have, and then at our next policy meeting, we're going to update it. So we're, we're good. We've got the, thank you for doing this.
I'm comfortable with that concept. What are you saying?
Yeah. So, um...
Can we delay the vote to the next meeting, and it will be all done?
So, so I think you have a number of policies. Are you saying that we can, you can vote on the other policies?
Yes.
This one, you will not vote on, because it will go back to the subcommittee to look at what you brought forward tonight.
Right. And the state very helpfully puts all of these protected classes in alphabetical order, which they're not in in our current policy. So this, this actually, we will standardize our policy by having everything exactly the same in sequence. So, anyway, this was a great catch by Rosemary. Thank you so much. I think that's it for policy.
Okay, thank you. Student support, Ms. LaBelle Pierce.
We just talked tonight about setting a possible date for Thursday, we just, next Thursday, we have to check in with other people who attend that meeting, and they'll, an agenda will be posted if that's gonna happen.
Questions? Seeing none, school personnel committee, that would be me. We continue the never-ending union negotiations. They seem to be never-ending. As soon as we finish one, there's another one that pops up. It's funny how that works, right? Right. So, executive committee, nothing to report. The student report. Here we go.
So, of course, we have to talk about graduation. It's graduation. Graduation was held last Friday, and thank God, it was outside, to be honest. I was, I was a little nervous leaving school, you know, it was, it was pretty cloudy, I was like, "Oh, my gosh, if it rains, I'm gonna feel so bad for this class." But it pulled through, and the sun came out, and it was really hot. It ended up being really hot. The day did a whole 360, so it was in their favor, and it was a nice ceremony. And Matthew and I both volunteered through the NHS, the balloon table, so we held everyone's balloons. You should have seen what it was like when it was over. Untangling all of those balloons and getting them to the right people was so hectic. Ms. Alexander and I spent a good 10 minutes unraveling, like, 20 balloons. It was, it was, it was interesting.
Sure, people don't, some people at home might not know what you mean. People come to the graduation with balloons and flowers and all kinds of things, and we've always established a protocol that they check them at the door.
Yeah.
And they're over, they're watched over by National Honor Society, couldn't be any better. And then people come at the end to reclaim their balloons to then give to the graduates. So you're right, I can imagine it's a bit of a hectic situation at the end of graduation.
Yeah, definitely, but we made it work. We got everyone's balloons in a timely order. June 6th and 7th, we'll be, we'll be holding Science MCAS for 9th graders and some 10th graders. We have an early release, June 13th, we will be dismissed at 11:58, of course you guys know. Undergraduate awards will be held June 14th at 9:00 a.m. in the Pittsburgh High Cafeteria. This is a breakfast event, and it's an end-of-the-year activity that allows to share the exemplary performance of our students that are exceeding expectations, so it would be for the class of 2019.
What was the date on that?
June 14th at 9:00 a.m. Parents are invited to, an email will be sent out to all of them. Finals, June 15th through June 20th, we'll be having finals for all students. For the students that will be attending boys or girl states, there will be accommodations for them, their finals will be pushed up. And on the last day of school, June 21st, we will be having another early release. And I think I'm just gonna hand it off to Matthew.
Okay. I just wanted to say again, congratulations to the class of 2018. You know, we've seen so much progress as a school with this class throughout the years, and I just, I just think we should look forward to seeing more from them in the future. Um, so, one thing that was here, Project SOAR, so some of you might have seen it, you know, there are a lot of posters and around Pittsburgh and Pittsburgh High School. That'll be take place June 12th at the Pittsburgh Municipal Airport, and it's the launching and the showcasing of it. So there will be a lot of talking, there will be just a lot of talking. But, you know, there are a lot of people involved, thousands of people who are involved in this.
Can you explain to people who may not know what Project SOAR is, what we're trying to accomplish?
Yeah, sure. So Project SOAR was an initiative brought about by Jerry Beck, who's the founder of the Revolving Museum. And he's just trying, he's very spontaneous and so creative and everything, and he decided, he actually got inspired by his daughter to build the world's largest airplane. And he actually got, yeah, world's largest paper airplane. Yeah, oops. Sorry, Jerry. But yeah, so yeah, he was inspired by his daughter, and the Guinness World Record actually proved it already, so. And the interesting thing is that he has, like, so many youth from all over the state and the region coming, coming up to support him. And people from Pittsburgh High School, they're getting, apparently, everyone from Pittsburgh High School is going to be able to go see the launching of it. I'm not sure exactly what he's gonna do, but, you know, he always makes things work somehow, so.
He doesn't know what he's gonna do.
Yeah, of course. Yeah.
The posters, the posters are great.
Yeah.
Every time I walk by, I see your face.
Yeah, my face, yeah. Should be some kind of logo.
It just pops out, because it's like the figure and the rest.
We tried to pass one, Mayor, but it didn't.
Yeah, it didn't go, all right, yeah. Actually, speaking to that, we are, myself and the impresario himself, will be going to Boston on Friday. We're on Jim Browdy and Marjorie Egan's show, WGBH, at the Boston Public Library. We'll be interviewed at 1:30.
Are you gonna be doing the quiz, the two of you together?
I don't know, I think I am. That's part of it, right? Isn't that some kind of quiz thing they do?
Yeah, last half hour on Fridays, yes.
Yeah, so that's something that he's...
He has it memorized.
I'm at home, sorry.
It goes all about, I don't even know what he's talking about. Yeah, you wanna come?
I won't be in town on Friday, sorry. I really won't, so.
But, you know, that, but it speaks to the importance of the project, the exposure the city's gotten from it, it's just been, Chronicle did a piece a couple of weeks ago, so.
That was wonderful.
Yeah, and so it's, it's all good, moving the right way. Yep. Go ahead, Matt.
Chromebook collection, week of June 18th. So during this week, a final exam, school, the school will begin to collect the Chromebooks. Just, they want the Chromebook, the case, and the charger. And if it has any specific price, you know, or damage or loss, anything, if it's lost, then...
You have to pay for it.
Yeah, exactly, you gotta pay some fee for it. I'm not exactly sure how much it is.
Well, if you lose it, or you break it, you have to pay for it, basically, because it's our responsibility to take care of our Chromebooks, so if, well, if we, if we break the Chromebooks, we have insurance, but I think if you do it more than a couple times, that's when it's like, you have to pay for it. But, yeah, if you don't return it, you have to, you have to buy it, basically, buy a new, new one.
How much is it?
I don't think it would be more expensive than like...
$300, yeah.
Or the charger would probably be like, what, $20, $40? Yeah.
So students who owe items like the Chromebooks actually will be ineligible for extracurricular activities until they, you know, get the repair done or pay up. And then the MCAS Science is June 6th and 7th, so that'll be for freshmen and sophomores and some juniors this Wednesday. And this is required by the Commonwealth, so.
I think that's all.
And that is it.
Questions? Yes?
I have a couple. One, do you know, in the end, how many girls and boys are attending girls and boys state? And, second, how many kids did you guys register to vote that day in the cafeteria? They had a voter registration drive in the cafeteria that looked pretty successful, so do you know, Matt, I'm putting you on the spot.
Oh, yeah, we didn't talk about that, the...
Well, just, you don't have to talk about that, but just in terms of the, in the voter registration, that was pretty cool, so do you know how many you got?
We, I know that we got a lot more students than we expected, just because we didn't think people would be willing to come up and, you know, sign a, you know, a sheet and pre-register to vote. But it seemed like a lot of people were interested, because, you know, they have their own views, everyone has their own political views, and they just find it really important. Politics is, you know, really interesting, and, because that kind of brings people together, but at the same time, it can divide people. And so we didn't expect a lot of people to come, but I think we, I don't know the exact number, but...
Well, thanks, I was just curious. It looked like a lot of kids.
There are a lot of kids.
They were handing out lollipops, pretty convincingly.
Which is why.
That was really, that was a real pull.
That was it. They saw the candy.
And then on the girls' boy's state, do you know how many kids in the end? I know you've, you've got some administrators here, they could probably help.
There were 12 girls and 12 boys, there are 12 girls and 12 boys, so one couldn't, you know, do it, so, yeah, 12 girls and 12 boys, exact. And that's just in a couple of weeks, so.
Yep. Thanks.
Questions? Thank you. Moving on. Approve the minutes of regular school committee meeting of May 21st, 2018. Make a motion to approve them. Motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, and is unanimous. No need for executive session at this time. We will, following the meeting, go into executive session for, to discuss personnel issues, only to reconvene to adjourn. Right? Okay, all right. Communications, did you, yes?
A few things. I had the opportunity to speak to Sandy Ellis, who is a registered nurse and who has really been, really been an advocate for getting the community aware of safe patient limits. And five days ago in the Sentinel, there was talk of closing the Lemonster Pediatric Unit. And this really concerns me as a parent, but it also concerns me as a school committee member, so I wanted to let everyone else know that, you know, this is happening and this will affect our kids. And I look forward to talking to Pam Rivers, our nurse leader, on specifics. This is very worrying, because I was born at Burbank Hospital, as I'm sure other folks in the room may have been as well, and over time, we have lost, the city of Pittsburgh has lost, you know, our, we, we lost that hospital, and to hear that Lemonster is looking to, you know, close opportunities for kids, you know, where do you go? Worcester? That doesn't seem right. So I'm very, I'm really concerned about that, and wanted to bring it to a higher level of awareness. Couple items here, Wednesday is DPW Day, it is our 10th DPW Day, unbelievable. And I just saw the giant maps of Pittsburgh that Kenny Dupont is printing out. We're gonna have huge street maps of Pittsburgh there with a slogan that says, "Where do you live?" And kids can find their street, because I bet a lot of kids has not seen maps of Pittsburgh with the streets. And we're gonna have another map that actually has the manholes and the drains and the sewers on it. So it'll be, "Here's the Pittsburgh you didn't know about," and the 172 miles of, you know, the, this underground, you know, structure that keeps the city moving. Also, I've been talking to all of our teachers that B Positive Therapy Pets is working with, and everyone is working on a little report that we will have in your next school committee packet. I'm only gonna ask our volunteers with pets to come to our final school committee meeting of the year, which is our tradition, to just give you guys an overview and have the opportunity to visit with some therapy pets. And amazing data, I just talked to Lisa Vitelli at Crocker, and one of the class, the class that we visit, her reading class, there are children in that class that have advanced seven reading levels. Now, that's entirely the work of this teacher, however, the therapy pets are there on Monday, and we kinda, I see, we see, kids reading for longer and kinda keeping going and petting the pets and moving forward. So these are really impressive statistics, so really look forward to sharing this. And Andre just sent me an email from the Franklin, Massachusetts superintendent, who wants to implement some kind of pet therapy in her school. So, you know, plant a garden, watch it grow, it's really great. My final item is this, I happened to go to this really cool festival, and it was in downtown Pittsburgh on Saturday, it was the Italian Festival, and as I arrived, this guy was singing. He had this fabulous voice. And it was our mayor! And I just, I wanted to just bring this up, because it was an awesome performance, and it was a really wonderful, it was a really, really, you know, warm and wonderful and delicious, you know, festival, and it's the first time for this festival.
It went well.
It went really well.
Yeah, big crowd, yeah. The weather held out, till about 9:00. Kind of, got a little damp around 9:00 o'clock, right?
Yeah. But that hap, that was happening in Pittsburgh, I had seen, you know, I had seen the flyers for it, and then was what, you know, happened to go, and there was all this excitement. It was, it was really a treat, it was a treat to hear you sing.
Thank you.
And if I can let the people at Stratton Players and New Players know, in case you need a hobby.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right, that's what I need, in my spare time, that's right.
Exactly.
Yeah, thank you. Yes?
Hey, comment, I just have to say, Sally, I, when I first met you, I thought you talked a real, you talked a lot about animals, and I didn't really understand it. But I have seen over the years, like, your commitment has been really transformative, and I, personally, I just want to say thank you, because I've seen other districts really struggling with the idea of pet therapy, and here, it's actually working. And I think that's really due to your leadership and your involvement in these organizations, so.
Thank you.
Really well done.
Thank you.
I'll just second that and say, thanks for coming to Pittsburgh State University during finals week. That was also quite, quite helpful for a lot of students, so, again, compliments.
Well, Mr. Wuff, well, thank you, those are really kind words, and it's, you know, Mr. Waffles is home now. He had...
Is it Dr. Waffles now? Didn't you mention that?
Uh, yes, there, there was talk, one of the, they asked, it may be an honorary degree, so he would be Dr. Waffles. So if we can, if we can put that in the president's, like, inbox...
Fuck the Waffles.
Waffles goes to Washington, yes, that's other projects. Mr. Waffles will be here next week. I don't know if, the mayor can't give an honorary degree, but maybe, well, Jeremy, you can do an honorary high school degree. Mr. Waffles, high school graduate. Oh.
Any other comment, comments or questions? Seeing none. Public comment, period, five-minute limit. Anyone wishing to make a public statement, please approach the center of the table, provide your name and address. Seeing none. Superintendent's report.
Just quickly, great graduations. I'm one of the few superintendents, it has two graduations every year, and it couldn't get better, but very different, one inside, one outside, very different kind of setting, and just wonderful, we're very, very fortunate, and wishing the best to our graduating class of 2018. You brought up literature and reading, and being the end of the year, there's an opportunity here to kind of bring people back. Some folks are staying and some are leaving, and one that is leaving is Erin Vassington. And you've heard about this over the years, Red Raider lending libraries. I'm gonna let Erin come up, maybe with Eva, and talk about what you've been doing all of this time. I'll let you announce the number of books that you and your organization have brought into Pittsburgh, so.
Erin.
It's, it's pretty amazing, so come on up. I think Erin's been here before, some of you may recognize her.
You probably already know what I do, so I...
We know you do something with books, yes, so...
I just bring books into the school, and I really, I want to thank all of you guys, I mean, especially Eva. I loved doing this all the years I did it, it was, it was probably, I got more out of it than the kids did, I'm sure. I really enjoy just bringing the books and seeing how excited the kids get and the teachers, and it's really hard, I'm gonna, I'm really gonna miss this, and I, I'm afraid I may regret it, but I just want to thank you guys for letting me do it, and...
How many books? How many books?
Over 100,000. Over 100,000, but it wasn't just me, it was, it was...
Yeah. Over 100,000 books distributed over those years to...
It was helped by a lot of the banks in town, Mr. Walsh, him and his wife, and the mayor helped, everybody, but I couldn't have done it, people in Sudbury, just every, everybody helped, so, thank you guys.
Well, good, and we have...
But if anybody comes to Rockport, feel free.
We have some little, something for you.
I'm inviting you.
And we're not giving you a book.
Yeah.
We have a little book, so if you will, this is a little souvenir, and it's, it's a beautiful scarf that has the Pittsburgh F. on it, so that when you're standing on the, on the ocean side of Rockport and the wind is blowing, you know, that scarf will blow behind you with the Pittsburgh F. on it, so congratulations, and thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And those are just, just some gifts to...
Thank you, thank you very much.
We're thanking you. Very grateful.
Before you leave the table, I'm embarrassed to leave it. I don't, I think you're very humble in saying...
In what you've done. And the first time I got to know Erin, she applied, I think, two years in a row when I was on the Pittsburgh Cultural Council, and we always supported it, and then I suggested to Erin to come before the Friends of the Pittsburgh Public Library and present her case, and the Friends were able to provide her with additional money. And even though Erin has said that she, a lot... And even though Erin has said that a lot of people have helped, which is true, but most of the hard work was Erin in going to different locations, going to scholastic book fairs and picking up books.
Going there next week.
Yeah. And just, just really committed to making sure that children had books to read and there were no downsides to it. They could bring the book home and if they never brought it back, that was okay. If they had a book that they wanted to keep, they could. And I know she did this every year at the schools. And I'm sure that the teachers in all those different grades were appreciative to have their own personal library in each classroom. And I just want to thank you again. We're gonna, we will miss you. So thank you for all that you did.
There are more books for this year. Eva was going to take us, getting them sent out to the schools.
Great. Thank you.
Enjoy Rockport. Thank you, Erin.
So this is a night also for just recognizing. Some of these recognitions have already happened, but I think it's always extra important to bring them to the whole school committee and have all of you see things that are happening with our staff and then folks at home. So first, I want to call up Sarah Marie Gogan. And her award, and you should have gotten information on this, is the, I had all my paperwork ready to go. There's, I think I got the secretary's. Here we go. Nope, that's the DSAC presentation. Sarah, you can come up while I look for my paper. I had it in all in order. Lending libraries, DSAC. It's the, it's the one with the college. I know that. I'm not sure what I did with that.
It's the Joel D. Miller Award.
So anyway, Sarah, would you let everyone know what it is you received? It was the alumni award at Fitchburg State University. And tell us what it was about and why it was and all of that.
The Joel D. Miller Award. He was instrumental at Fitchburg State in establishing the education program there. He founded it.
I found it.
Probably do a better job than you.
Yes. Yes. It's the, yeah, it's the State University Alumni Association granted this award. It was established in nineteen fifty-five by Ms. Florence M. Miller for an alumni or faculty member. And this honor is to a graduate or former student at Fitchburg State University. Ms. Gogan exemplifies the qualities and thus will deservingly be presented this award in front of alumni educators. And then there was a retired educator's luncheon. So it's pretty incredible, the prestigious Joel D. Miller Award for Teaching. So congratulations. Tell us a little bit about the award and your feelings on that day and your connection with Fitchburg State University.
So actually, I haven't received the award yet. I'll receive it Thursday is the luncheon. I'm looking forward to it. I'm really, I was honored when my principal, Ms. Curry, nominated me for the award. I was really happy just to be nominated. I didn't, I didn't think I'd win. And I was just very humbled to find out that I had won. I received my bachelor's from Fitchburg State and graduated in two thousand and four. And then went back to receive my master's there and I finished that up in two thousand and nine. So I'm excited and again honored to receive this award.
Now, Sarah looks familiar. She's the person associated with the lab. That new lab at Goodrich Academy and all the work in setting that up, choosing everything for that initiative and then doing some incredible things in that lab, as you saw with 3D printing and everything else. So thank you for your dedication. Your kids recognize it every day. We try to recognize it when we can, but it's wonderful to have Fitchburg State University recognize it too. And I see you brought, you know, your support system behind you. So we really appreciate them coming also.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. So one award that has taken place already centers around worms. Chris, we invite Chris Landry to come up. I was letting Chris know. He said his classroom was right next door. And I said, "Your classroom is where we hold our executive sessions." And he said, "Well, does anyone mind the worms?" And I said, "Well, it makes for very short executive sessions, if nothing else."
That's a good thing.
Yeah, it's a good thing. Right. But again, this was an incredible honor, recognized by, it was the secretary's award for excellence. The recognition was at the State House. But again, Chris, like so many of our staff members, it was an MCAS week. And he felt, "I need to be here for my students." So he was not able to go. But he has the award and I'm going to let him talk a little bit about it. And also tell them what section, what page you ended up on from Fitchburg in terms of the different degrees of honor.
So we were nominated, I took a course at Brandeis University many years back, maybe two or three. And professor there remembered us talking about my science club, the Science Society that we have, and a lot of the crazy things that we do. And so she nominated. And there were three or four tiers. There's first honors. It's the highest award. You can get $300 from the state. There's second honors, which is a $200 award. Third honors, $100 award. An honor roll, which is no real award. You just get the recognition. And we placed first honors.
Can you introduce your...
Yes, this is Stephanie Nicole. So do you guys want to talk about the worm farm and why?
We were in Science Society one day and we were talking about like what we wanted to do with, like, since we just got into the program and we chose our activity. And he, Mr. Landry, actually asked us what we wanted to do because he doesn't make us do things. He asks us. And we actually had a whole bunch of different ideas. And then someone said worm farming and he thought it was a really good idea. So we decided to do it. And then he said that whatever we get, like, we will make the soil from the worms and then we'll sell it for like the school. And we'll continue to do that.
So if you've been in my classroom for an executive session, you will notice that there was three large Tupperware bins in the back. And they might have smelled. They might not have. The smell was actually not too bad. We had them in there most of the winter and you really couldn't tell. It was really good. We had two hundred and fifty red wiggler worms that the district purchased for us, as well as the bins. The students all, I gave them power drills and tools and stuff, and they built the whole worm farm themselves. They figured it out, put the holes where it needed to be, stacked them the way it works. So for those of you who are unfamiliar with worm farming, the way it works is we have a pretty basic three-stack system. The top stack is where all the worms live with all of the compost. Our worms take about five pounds of food from the cafeteria that would normally go into the trash. And it goes into the worm farm. And about two or three days, the worms will decompose that into what is called vermicompost, which is the most prime soil you could ever use in a garden. It's perfect stuff. Out of that also, you'll get what they call worm tea, which I wouldn't recommend drinking. But, and it's called worm tea because it looks like a tea, but it is also an amazing fertilizer for your garden as well. And so we've, how long have we been doing this now? Since December, November, December? We've probably churned out maybe, I would say, three or four pounds of vermicompost easily within a month. We've already put some of it in the front garden that was redone for us, as long with some worm tea. And the cafeteria loves the fact that we're taking a lot of their food waste. I don't know how many times they'll come up to me and say, "Hey, we just got some produce that we can't give to the kids. Can we give to the worm farm?" And they love that, that it's not going to waste. So it's been a really good effort. We've now moved it, if you're curious about seeing it, right behind that door. So it's right near my classroom. So if you just exit that door and you look right, you will see the stack. And it's literally self-sustaining. The worms have now started reproducing on their own. So we will probably have two or three new farms next year if it keeps going. And then, like Nicole said, our hopes is that we can then use that soil to maybe offer to the community to then maybe raise money for the school in some way. As a bigger partnership, we were just trying to talk about how the, there's a lot of pollution and there's a lot of runoff that's going on in the city. And this is a good way of encouraging people, "Don't use that stuff. Use this stuff instead." And it's just, it's just a better solution.
You know, you want to link up with growing places.
Yes, I've been told that.
That's who you want to, I mean, partner with them. Great. Because that's what they do.
Right.
You know, guiding and that kind of thing for trying to get people to eat better food. Grow your own, eat locally, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Great.
So did you learn a lot? And obviously, it's not just putting worms in soil and then watching them do things, but I'm sure you had to do a lot of research.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, none of us, including myself, ever did this. So it was literally sitting in our science lab on computers going, "Okay, what in the world are we doing here?"
That's great.
So girls, you're both in the Science Society. How many kids are in the Science Society?
A lot.
A lot.
I'm just going to say, if you are a parent of a child in memorial, try to get them to join the Science Society.
Well, thank you.
Because it's so incredible. And you really are an exemplary teacher.
Oh, thank you. I'd say we have about a dozen eighth graders. And this year, we're doing something different. We've paired up with Twenty First Century Program, which normally we've never done before. And so what we've done is we've had our eighth graders mentoring the Twenty First Century fifth, sixth, and seventh and eighth grade students in that program. So for the first time ever, we've had younger kids getting involved. And they've been actually really good with it as well. It cracks me up when I say, "Okay, we've got to check on the worms." And the fifth and sixth graders are like, "Can I hold a worm?" They get their hands deep in there and they just have no fear.
Could I ask you about that? So if you're working with the Twenty First Century, do you still meet in the morning?
We haven't met in the morning this year because we've been doing with the Twenty First Century. But I still do have students who show up in the mornings anyway, to say.
Do students have to be in the Twenty First Century program to be in Science Society?
No.
Okay, that's good.
No. So I've just left it open for everybody.
That's great.
Can you let me say your names again, please?
Stephanie.
Edna.
Remus Lopez.
Nicole Avila. A-V-I-L-A. Thanks so much.
Good job. Congratulations.
Oh, and I just wanted to add, these guys had some brilliant ideas on what to do with that money. And so they're hoping to pick up some hunting cameras, the little cameras that hunters would use. And we have a field lab out in the back. And they were hoping to put the cameras out there, lock them in place. And then we'd monitor the activities of what's going on with nature and biodiversity.
That's great.
So that, and that was, again, all their ideas. I was like, "That's brilliant. Why aren't we doing that already?"
What's the cost of a camera?
That could be an after-school club. If somebody wanted to, that could put in a proposal as for an after-school gala club.
Oh, yeah.
And use that funding to pay for the cameras, too.
Well, this, we'll cover all of it. I mean, we're good.
Do you need to do that?
What was that?
They have enough money to buy the cameras?
Yeah, we already did the research into that. Each camera we found would cost about $50. With the $300 that we have, we'll be able to buy three cameras and one drone with no problems.
That's great.
What grade are you girls in?
Eighth.
So you're going to miss doing this next year, yes?
Yes.
I think it's great to get an opportunity to work with and mentor younger fifth, sixth, and seventh graders. I think that's a, it's a really, I think, a good learning experience for you to have. It's nice that you provided that opportunity. It's great.
You guys, since you guys are freshmen next year, hopefully at Fitchburg High, you guys should definitely consider, you know, starting a club related to this. If you find one of your science teachers, they can help you start a club. You know, you can start a science club within the school and you guys can continue the worm, you know, bring it into FHS. I feel like that'd be a really good idea, especially for the cafeteria, you guys.
And it's a beautiful garden at Fitchburg High.
Exactly. You guys, you guys can use the soil for the garden. Oh, that'd be a great idea. You should totally consider that.
And of course, we'd let you have some worms.
The offspring.
The offspring.
Look Lisa up. She'll be a senior.
I'll help you guys. We'll join the club.
She said, "Okay," already.
Okay, thank you so much and congratulations again.
Thank you.
So over the years, all of you have heard us talk about our work with DSAC. And I think it was Ms. Lebel who said, you know, "Is there a way to have DSAC come and talk about the work that they're doing, especially with the high schools?" So we have Sarah Jordan here today and Principal Roach. So if you would come down and take it away, whatever you want to do.
I'm all of Mr. Landry's ass.
Worms!
Bring some worms. You didn't bring worms.
What's DSAC stand for? Andre?
District and School Assistant Centers. I'm sorry to go over.
District, what is it?
District and School Assistant Centers.
There's, slides are coming.
I like the gulf between us.
Well, we have to have our mics.
Oh.
So Sarah has been working with us at Fitchburg High School this year. What you're receiving is, I would say, a fairly thorough overview of the work that she's helped us do over the past year plus, because we really started this, I would say, April of two thousand and seventeen. So towards the end of the sixteen, seventeen school year. It's reference material, so it does include a PowerPoint presentation with a lot of the material that would describe our instructional focus this year. DSAC comes in as the instructional coach for Fitchburg High and helps us with, you know, the planning that we want to try to accomplish, but also analyzing data that we collect, whether that's classroom data or something else. That's been a lot of it this year. They've been a huge resource to us. Sarah Jordan has been a tremendous asset to our team this year because it's very complex work. You know, when we talk about a hundred teachers and focusing on instructional goals that would be new to many, you know, it's complicated. And being able to have someone with her expertise help us to come up with tools, which you'll see some of those are in there as well. Towards the back, you have some of the walkthrough tools that we've used, some samples of feedback that we've given, some discourse rubrics and discourse walkthrough tools as well. That's our next phase ultimately, we're excited about for next year. So it's, there's a lot in there, but I know that Sarah wanted to talk a little bit, but we really just want to answer questions that you might have, too.
So the mayor asked, "What does DSAC stand for?" And we're the part, we're part of the, of DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. That's the assistance part. And there's, currently, there are six DSAC teams. And we are sent out to support Level Three and Level Four schools. But this year, our mandate became to support either the bottom ten percent of schools and help them affect turnaround, or to also work with what are called federal-focused schools. So we are not part of the accountability part of DESI. The DSAC has been in Fitchburg since DSACs were first begun about nine years ago. South Street is a marvelous school with a phenomenal principal. We've done some, up until last year, we did some work at South Street. Mom, in fact, I'm going to Rhine Gold on Wednesday because the raw data are out, so we need to look at that. And, but mostly this year, I've been focusing on the high school with Jeremy because he's a turnaround school. And my... It means that to exit your current status, which it used to be Level Four status, but, or you're the bottom ten percent of the, you might be Level Three, but you're bottom ten percent, to turn that around and start going back up to percentile rankings. There are certain practices that have been proven by research to be effective. And the trick is helping school administration decide what the focus should be and getting buy-in from the staff, which has been, so that's why I spend a lot of time just listening and watching the principal, in this case, watching Mr. Roach. Really, he developed a distributed leadership. So he works with his instructional leadership team. And they give him feedback and he has ideas. And they go into their, to their teams of teachers. And there's a lot of talk now. There's a, it's a great communication system. And that's turnaround practice number one, distributed leadership. And then the second, distrib, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
And the second practice...
I keep hearing, "Bottom ten percent." Why do I keep hearing that? Are we the bottom ten percent?
Yes.
We are.
Yes. MCAS ranking.
Yeah. Okay.
So what the, what the state did, I'm going to go back to the bottom ten percent. The state looked at those schools and said, "Rather than wait until they sink into Level Four status, let's give them some funds." And they had, these schools were offered monitoring or site visits by either American Institute of Research or Schoolworks and give it a very extensive portrait of what are your strengths and weaknesses. and give it a very extensive portrait of what are your strengths and weaknesses. And given that report, the principal met with teachers and said, what's our plan? And developed, the turnaround plan was developed. So there's parts of that in the packet that Jeremy pulled together for you. And data, MCAS data, to me, are the least useful of any, because it's a one-shot picture. And the most useful data are the day-to-day measurements of what's going on in the classroom. So Jeremy and I worked to develop tools of collection around instruction. And we, we were in and out of classrooms. Sometimes I, I have a graduate student who's working with me. We'd be in classrooms, trying to make the tools work. And the teachers know me, so there was never any resistance there. So that the data that we gather is useful for teachers to understand behaviors, either what they're doing and then what needs to change. Ms. LaBelle had her hand up first. I'm fast.
So I have a, I have a few questions, but one, would, are all teachers evaluated? Two, or not evaluated, but you have this, this tool, and I was just looking at the quick-visit classroom feedback tool that it looks like is there. And then, secondly, are you seeing trends that now become objectives? Because I know in some document, Mr. Roach, I'm not sure which one it was, but you have identified that maybe there are objectives on the board, and the protocols are kind of being followed, but the rigor might not be there in a particular class. So I'm just kind of curious how all those pieces kind of play. So one, is everybody getting visited? And then, two, what's happening with that data?
Sure, so, yes, I would say so. Probably academic areas maybe more frequently. But everybody has had walkthroughs over the course of the year, in addition to the observation summaries. The second phase of the plan, I did insert in this, so you can take a look at the goal statement for eighteen, nineteen. It's just an additional, it's the next step. So our first step was really structural pieces, you know, the structural aspects of a lesson plan and what we would expect to see in a classroom. And we, you know, we had several site visits over the course of the past couple of years, and the most recent one, in April, identified that there had been strong evidence that that, you know, that that was in place, and all those goals that we had put forward, you know, were essentially satisfied. So the next phase is, is really digging into the academic discourse, you know, how are students talking, what are they talking about, how are they learning, you know, in evidence by, by that, you know, discourse that you're hearing, as a way to increase academic rigor. So I think that, that part is, is sort of the end of the packet, and we're just starting in on that, you know, because it was really a two-year plan, and, and we're entering into year two. So, you know, that's where a lot of the professional development has been targeted. You know, there's a, there's a part of this that shows some of the PD, and that's where Tanya Jarrett and Mark Pierce, who were here tonight, Jen Scott, have helped a lot in putting that together. You can see the different offerings are all directly aligned to, to our action plan, you know, around instruction and focusing on helping teachers do, you know, what they want to do, which is a great job with, with some of the, you know, aspects of instruction that can be, can be challenging. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so I know that every teacher would be having a walkthrough, but is that a, is that with you, or is that just with?
Could be any one of us.
Okay, could be, okay.
Yeah.
I, once a tool is, is sort of established, and his learning team, his instructional learning team, instructional...
Leadership.
Leadership team, yes.
Leadership, there we go, I L T, have felt that it was a strong tool. I, I back out, and the administrators in the building collect their own data. Jeremy and Jen have, have, Ms. Scott and Mr. Roach have often submitted to me so that I can review for patterns, because it's very qualitative. And so there's no one at the schools dedicated to data. Well, that's where I step in, because it's a temporary thing, and then we decide on the next steps.
Thank you.
So does the school district approach you, or does DSAC approach the school districts?
We've had an...
In order for this to happen, I mean, how did that happen here in Pittsburgh?
Years ago, as we found time, right, Paula?
Yeah.
Yeah, nine years.
So when the DSACs first began, they had a, I don't know if this was in, a broader and more shallow reach. And at the time, we're focused on Level Three schools, Level Three districts, which was Pittsburgh, and/or schools that had very specific cohorts of students that were struggling from year to year. So those federal-focus groups are generally students with disabilities, students who are learning English as a second language, or separate...
Or poor.
High-needs or poor kids. So originally, their work was in several of our schools, based on schools that met those criteria. And there was, it was mostly around professional development or assistance for data analysis. So some of the professional development, one member of the team, Bruce McDonald, would go into schools during early release days and run professional development on lesson study, and what a lesson study model looked like, and what the outcome would be if you engaged in that work. Another PD was walkthroughs as a non-evaluative system to collect the kind of data Syra is talking about. And even our, DSAC went into our Level Two schools because of the poverty level. And then we often took the DSAC work and brought it out to everybody. So learning walks as an observational system versus evaluation are very helpful. Lesson study as a model, and our coaches have engaged in that kind of work, very helpful. In addition, the DSAC, going back many years, offers instructional professional development through networks. So is it quarterly, Tanya, maybe every two months? The DSAC will run a network for instructional leadership and look at topics and bring folks together from the entire region. So we've, I think we've always been very strategic and intentional partners to take advantage of their work. So through that, we then decide, we meet, Andre and I in cabinet meet with RAD and the DSAC staff in the fall and say, kind of, what's the game plan for the year? Map it out. We usually have a meeting in the spring to talk about what we've done and thinking ahead. And then in that process, say, okay, Pittsburgh High is poised, that's where the energy. South Street may still need some help with X, Y, Z cohort. Rhinegold needs some help with what, a cohort. Memorial's, Syra was here for a while at Memorial, the special ed, the Students with Disabilities cohort at Memorial is a persistently lower-performing group. So it's generally very collaboratively determined who does what with which school and when. Long answer to your short question, but...
May I ask another?
Go ahead.
So Sarah, what, in your experience, like, what, what's, what's the tipping point? Like, what, what has to happen for, for districts to kind of move out of there? I, I will just say on my own, when, when you look at, like, Mayor, you're disappointed to hear that, the ranking there, but when you look at MCAS data, and you look at exceeds or meets expectation, and you look at Pittsburgh's numbers, it's still kind of troubling to me that even at the state, where it might be like forty-five percent, you know, right? So we're still not talking like the majority of kids are meeting or exceeding expectations across the board. But I, I guess I'm kind of curious what you would say works in districts? Like, and, and is that the direction that you see us kind of going?
Never underestimate the power of a really good leader.
Yeah.
I can, I, if I, if there's not a strong principal with a really clear vision, no amount of goodwill can go over that. And having a really strong superintendent and this team here, it makes all the difference. I'm watching districts that were sinking, really sinking, and this here, there's a new superintendent in place and a couple new principals, and the turnaround is just amazing. The site visits come back and, and show huge jumps in instructions, huge jumps in terms of trust. Trust is another key issue. So the tipping point is getting it started. And that, sometimes it has to be very, very strategic. I've watched Gardner very quietly laying things in place, and all of a sudden, it's like a garden. First year it sleeps, second year it creeps, third year it leaps. There's leaping going on. But it comes down to, the first thing we have to have is leadership, a leader with a clear vision.
So DSAC has been here for almost ten years?
Yes. We're the ghost in the machine.
Has anything changed?
Yes.
It has?
Yes.
It's still on the lower ten percent?
Maybe that hasn't changed. I don't know how to answer that, because...
Yeah.
The level of poverty has been astronomically in the past, in these, in this part of central Massachusetts. I look at the level of trauma and the level of services that schools need, and that part is way out of the control of schools. What happens is teachers tend to be white, middle-class females.
Excuse me, but could you speak up a bit, or I don't know if that mic would help?
Would it help, I don't know, a little bit closer? No?
The mic is for TV.
So teachers tend to be white, middle-class females, and they teach in a certain, certain style. The students that are starting to populate central Massachusetts are poor, there's more brown, there's more bilingual or simply not English-speaking. And the teachers don't have the tools yet. And the districts, Pittsburgh is doing well, Pittsburgh is a leader, because I think of the eureka math and how you shared all those resources. And the other day, I was in a district, and they kept talking about, oh, Pittsburgh offered to share this. So it was, but there's, without someone coordinating the discussions between people and without trying to help districts locate resources, we get stuck. So what I've seen in Pittsburgh in the past four years is a developing understanding of the need to support students who aren't like us, a growing awareness of how to teach in a way that we weren't taught to teach. And a shift towards collaborative practices. Teachers traditionally have been introverts, they go in the classroom, they shut their door. But that doesn't help anymore, and teaching now demands that teachers open the door and collaborate and then share with each other. Those practices have been put in place. Have we seen changes in instruction? Not yet. Well, we've seen changes in instruction, have we seen changes in the measurements? Not yet, because that's a slow practice, especially at the high school. The high school is getting nine years of, of a slow turnaround. I think, and you can't, you, until, I'm looking at this in Winston in particular, that, that until instruction improves across the board, the kids at the high school aren't going to show the, show the games that we need, then all of a sudden, there will be that jump. And I think that's coming soon.
Yeah, I mean, I would say that we've, the progress this year has been quite palpable, you know, from my perspective. You know, it's allowed us to really maintain focus on instruction throughout the year. And, and as I said, when the site visit team came in April, they, there were dramatic gains in many of the instructional areas that we focused on. The other thing I would say, and not to make excuses, but almost every urban high school in Massachusetts is Level Three or Four.
Yeah.
Right, and it's not surprising as to why, as Sarah articulated, I think, that we take all students. You know, we, we literally take all students, and we don't, you know, and I'm not here to denigrate other schools that have selection processes or anything like that, we don't do any of that. So we enrolled students last week, we're enrolling students still, you know, for, just in time for Science MCAS. We'll have three days to work with them, and they'll go in and maybe not do well on that test.
Those are the tr...
But that's the reality of...
We own that score, we own that score.
We have over a thirty percent churn rate. We, we had, we had almost eight hundred students leave the district this year, and eight hundred and seventy-seven moved in.
That's why your data that shows kids who have been consistently in the Pittsburgh Public Schools and they're meeting and or exceeding, so...
That's why that slide is in there, and if I focused, and Mayor, I, I hear what you're saying, but if I focused on that percentage, I would have quit ten years ago. But that's not the percentage. I don't focus on the percentage that the high school is in, because that's only a reflection of where we are compared to every other school in the state. There are schools that have a zero turnaround in terms of student body. Every kid that's there in September is there in June, so...
Maybe was there since kindergarten.
Right, and maybe was there since kindergarten.
Yeah.
You know, we have group homes, which means that there are students who are coming and going and who are showing up at the door of the high school with serious needs to be addressed before you can address their academics. And then if you had a student, if a student shows up, a tenth grader at the high school this week who's been in three different schools, they will take the Science MCAS test, and Pittsburgh owns that science score. So it's, there's a complexity there. There are times when the high school has missed because of participation in, in the test. And that's because we couldn't find the kids, or the kids didn't come to school on the day of the test. You're penalized, the system penalizes you because you did not meet that amount of participation. So it's very complex. Also, our relationship with, with MCAS, with the DSAC, has, has been over all of our schools. So it's not that the, that DSAC has been at the high school for ten years. This is the first year of this focus at the high school. They have been working with us on learning, implementing coaching. We didn't have coaches before doing the data stuff. DSAC worked with us on that work. So there are a lot of things that DSAC, as you said, Bruce McDonald on learning walks, starting to implement that, on integration, inclusion of special education. So there's just a whole bunch of things that we've worked on. And, you know, I think what we focus on is, you know, what you heard from Lisa and from Matthew, what you saw at graduation. You know, you saw forty students who became part of the honors, who received special honors at Pittsburgh High.
Forty-one.
Five years, forty-one, but who's counting? But, but five or six years ago, there were nineteen. So what I think, you know, at least I hope is my legacy, is that Pittsburgh tries to meet every single kid, wherever they are. And if they've been here since kindergarten, and they can eat a full academic meal, and they want to go to Harvard, that high school will make sure they go to Harvard. But if they showed up three days ago, and they're now a Pittsburgh High School Red Raider, that high school will make them, have them take the science test and then get them ready to retake it again in, in, you know, in the following year. So I think that's part of what we're looking at, is, you know, how do you look at it in a broad point of view? And we're very fortunate to have, and Tom Lamy is on that, on that group, on DSAC. So he's somebody who, you know, has come here, and we've worked with him also. So I, I don't want to, I'm not dismissing it.
I don't want to make excuses.
And I'm not making light of it, and I'm not making excuses of it, but nothing happens in a vacuum. These things happen in a full context of the whole, you know, testing system and state and all of that.
I think, too, just to interject on it as well, one of the things that the DSAC did this year was, and I do want to address a question that Aiden brought up, is put together a team of high school principals from around the state to help us connect, because it, I think a lot of the work had been focused K to eight for many years, up until maybe this year or last year. So I was able to, we had, one of them was snowed out, another one got canceled, but the, the goal was to have three meetings with New Bedford, and Fall River, and Pittsfield, and Pittsburgh, and Worcester, and some other places that, you know, are all working through a lot of the same kinds of, of, you know, questions and challenges. How do we, how do we help teachers who want to do a great job, who put a great effort in, you know, and have the kind of impacts that we want to see in, unfortunately, the measurement that is sixty percent of your accountability? Now, Aiden brought up a question about, is the state taking into account some of this transience and churn rate? And they will be moving forward, they have redesigned the accountability system. There's not going to be any more levels, actually, there won't be Level One, Two, Three, Four, Five. There'll be different terms, more similar to exceeding...
In progress, yeah.
Expectations and so forth, and, and some of the factors do account for, you know, if you have a student enrolled two days before, they wouldn't be counted in your, in your scores anymore. So at least for some of the measurements. So, you know, I think that the state is here... So, I, you know, I think that the state is hearing that too, that there's a whole slew of schools that have a much bigger challenge. And, and so you have to try to weigh that out a little bit. But it's, you know, we want, we need to do a better job too. I mean, that's another factor. And, and though we've have a, our highest grad rate we've ever had, lowest dropout rate, best attendance rate, AP scores, all these things, high grad numbers and Gold F's forty-one and different things like that, you know, we still can do better in the MCAS test itself. And we need to help those kids who are ESL and have learning disabilities and have been transient to try to meet, meet the same standard that, you know, the forty-one Gold F's are meeting and, and kids like Lisa and Matthew you hear from all the time.
I mean, we can help them try to reach those goals, but there's a certain reality that's just keeping that gap that like we can't bridge. I mean, there's cer- certain circumstances that we just have to deal with. And the fact that we're getting punished for the reality that we're facing just seems to be, I, I don't know how that makes sense to me. And another point that I just wanted to make, just kind of stepping back to a couple, like five minutes ago. But I just disagree with the premise that the fact that a huge majority of teachers are white, middle-class women, that they all stick to one style of teaching, I, I don't agree with that, uh, at all. And I, I mean, of course, that's an obstacle that, that everyone faces, but to, to put them in one category, that they teach one way.
No, Aiden, those are the statistics. And the, you... If it sounded like I was dismissing teachers, I apologize for that implication. I myself am a white, middle-class, granted, I grew up overseas and I speak several languages, but I was simply pointing out patterns that have been documented, that it's hard to teach what you don't know. And therefore, my job as a researcher and as a school support person is to help people identify what it is they need in order to teach the students that are in front of them. Ms. Doolittle-
I don't know if this is the spot, but I feel that we're expecting them to come into our world and meet our standards. And I think we're failing to go to their world and meet what they know. I, I think that's an opportunity to, that when they come, rather than saying, "Hurry up, catch up, get it, you've got a lot of work to do," they'll say, "Who are you? Where, where have you come from? Tell us about you. Tell us..." And if we had an attitude of, "The guests are coming." And, uh, tiny anecdote, but in one class this week, there was a gentleman, young man with a hood on and, and I looked at him, I said, "What's he doing?" you know? And instead of, I, I curtailed my own thoughts. Instead of judging, he's kind of, you know, mopey, he doesn't care. I said, "Hi." His name happened to be Amadeus. So, I said, "Hi, Amadeus. How are you?" "Well, I'm all right." Da-da-da-da. And I said, "What are you going to do this weekend?" He opened up. "Dude, he's fishing. He goes to go fishing with his father and this and that." And I said, "Woo, this old Amadeus is another person." But it's, uh, I just think that they're jewels that we're trying to change into, into us, be like us. I don't know if that makes sense exactly, but...
Well, it's being aware of where people are coming from. To add to that anecdote, um, the word "beginning," we take the word "beginning" for granted because we grew up hearing it all our lives. But in a first-grade classroom, a lot of children don't know what the word "beginning" is, even though it's used all the time. The beginning of the line may keep me going. What is the beginning sound of this word? And until we explicitly teach that word "beginning," a lot of children are in the dark because they haven't heard it all their lives. It's that stepping back and saying, "What is it I take for granted in my own language, my own instruction?" That is part of the new instructional core. It's part of the sheltered instruction that teachers have to go through. It's part of the social-emotional learning that is now embedded through the curriculum. Right? Being able to say, "What are the words that, that my children need in my classroom to function?" So, it's...
I, I understand where you're coming from. I was a middle school principal, junior high principal. And I came in and I started the middle school here in Fitchburg. And, uh, one of the most difficult things was dealing with staff who taught science or history or math and getting them to change with a philosophy of teaching students.
Okay.
And that was the big, the big difference that, and I, I mean, I had teachers telling me, "I don't teach kids. I teach this subject," you know, "in one way." And that was it, you know? And that was the most difficult thing that I had to deal with.
Jeremy's instructional leadership team asked if they could do rounds with me. And they were amazed because one, the, one of the huge strengths at Fitchburg High School is relationships that teachers have with their students. Every classroom we walked in, you could tell the students trusted teachers. They felt comfortable. They weren't afraid to ask questions or even to zone out for moments. And that kind of trust is irreplaceable. It's clear that the teachers are teaching the children in front of them and not just teaching a, a subject, most of the time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I do appreciate your comment and I agree with it, that the MCAS results are the least useful set of data.
Mm-hmm.
And I was happy to hear what you were saying, Jeremy, that the state, that the Commonwealth is finally
Mm-hmm.
looking at things to make, make changes so that, I guess to talk about what Aiden was saying, that, that, that districts aren't punished when, when you have people coming and going on an annual basis. It, it just doesn't truly reflect what the skill level is of, of the entire population in, in the district.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
The next thing that you have is your calendar, so no change there. It's the, uh, school committee calendar that you have seen and you'll be voting on. Uh, next also, um, Paula had a, uh, one-year contract that was to end, uh, in, on, in December, on December nineteenth. Uh, given my transition, she approached me and asked if I could bring to the school committee to extend that calendar to the end of the year. So, the only thing that's been changed about the calen, about the contract that she had is the ending date from December nineteenth until June thirtieth.
Okay.
Um, so unless there, you feel, if you feel that there needs to be discussion about that, then you would need an executive session. If you don't feel there's needs to be discussion about that, then there's an, an action item on that. Because you, um, hire me, the assistant superintendent's, uh, and the pupil personnel director and...
Sped director.
And the sped director. Other than that, you don't hire the other folks. I do those, but you do this. So, um, I'll leave it to you.
What are the wishes of the committee? I, you should just take a vote.
Make a motion that we accept the superintendent's recommendation.
Second.
That's second.
What item is that on the, uh?
It's, um, let's see.
One oh two seven, eighteen oh two seven.
So, it's on the third page in.
Bottom of the page. Yep.
Yep. And there's no change to the contract except for the date.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Motion made.
Seconded.
And seconded, eighteen dash one oh two, excuse me, one zero two six. Prove the contract for assistant superintendent.
Two, two, seven, seven.
Oh, I'm sorry. What am I, oh, we're up above, okay. Eighteen da, one dash one oh two seven, prove the super, accept warrant. Is that what we're looking at?
Prove the contract. She's looking at the old.
I gave, I handed out a new agenda to everyone.
She's looking at the wrong one.
Third page in.
Eighteen, both, ten, ten twenty-seven, prove the contract for assistant superintendent. Curriculum strength. Motion was made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Can we say thank you to Paula?
Thank you.
Because I think that's going to be critical.
Thank you. Good luck getting away that easy, dude.
I know. She keeps trying to get away. School choice, there are, I won't even list them, but there are a whole list of items, uh, that you'll be voting on for school choice funds tonight.
What's the standing number on that? How much are you getting in school choice?
So, around a million and a half. Yeah, so every year, uh, when the school committee votes, final year on the regular school city budget, uh, we add on all the individual line items for school choice next year, and there's a spreadsheet in your packet tonight and in the budget that shows, uh, what each of those line items are.
Significant amount of, uh, school choice out of this. What's it going to leave?
So, uh, it'll be about a hundred, this is about a hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars or a hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars less. So, you know, if we're at a million five, roughly, we're going to end this year. Nothing else gets spent. It'll be a little bit below a million four June next year.
But these are the things we've traditionally been funding. So, like middle school sports and...
We have to bring them to you. Anytime anything is spent out of school choice, it has to come to the full committee and it has to come in public session. And the first item is the, uh, school choice funds for the supplies. And that goes back to about five or six years ago where we had a serious, uh, budget deficit and we would have had to cut staff members. And instead of cutting staff, we moved the supply items to school choice funds. And that, and they're still there. And so, when, when, uh, schools purchase all of their supplies and materials, it comes out of school choice as opposed to out of the city budget.
So, just to clarify, the only, um, item on the listing that's not included on my spreadsheet is just really the next item below the school choice on the, uh, laundry roof repair.
Yeah.
Where, um, it's listed as, that might be one of the sources for that, but it's not because it was just, that news was after we went to press, so to speak, so...
You got your letter today from...
Yes, so, um, so we received the bid. First, there was an estimator. Um, we received an estimate on what the roof was going to cost. Then we actually got the bid. The bid was over what the allotted two million is. Bob talked to the city. The city said, you know, "We're not able to go beyond the two million." So, I sent a letter to the city saying that if that's where we ended up being, we would go to school choice. We, we can't slow down this process at all. We gotta move and we gotta do this roof. So, we will figure out a way to do it and if we need to, because we do have these reserves in school choice, we would use those reserves.
Yes, so again, there are, there are three choices on the action item itself, whether it be if the senate budget gets approved in conference committee, there might, may be additional funds or some money in the school building maintenance revolving account or, or school choice. So, it's, it's left kind of broad right now and then once construction is done.
We can do on the city side as well, further into the year.
Yeah, but right now, we didn't want, we needed to say, "Yes, you're good. We've got the money. This is, this is ready to go."
Yeah, funds are available.
So, that's what the capital letter is. There should be a letter, there was a letter in your budget on that. And then finally, um, I didn't, we don't, I didn't bring another slideshow because really nothing has changed. So, the only thing that has changed, and if you go to your booklet in section eight, there's a, there's a page that looks like this that says FY nineteen budget balanced, exclamation point. So, I had said the last time we met, we would continue to look at it. It's in the section eight. It's a table like this. It has yellow in it and it says budget balanced. So, we were working from, um, our, our costs and our, what we had for funds. So, we went and looked through the budget. Uh, we were able to identify, um, savings in sped out of district tu- tuitions. We were able to, uh, Jeremy has a group of advisors at the high school and he looked at how he was using those advisors and we're reducing the number of advisors at the high school. And that's a savings of forty-three thousand. There are, uh, there's positions that actually meet the requirements of that additional aid we received in terms of working with ELL students. Uh, that, we were able to identify portions of those positions for seventy thousand. And then there's a reduction in the business office. We received five or six questions from, um, Ms. LaBelle Pierce. You have her questions on a handout that I gave you and gave you all of the backup to her questions. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it. It was at your place. Uh, we just received them this morning and pulled together the information. One was on circuit breaker, one question. The other one was on transportation. A third was on the use of the gala funds. So, I printed out for you all of the different after-school programs that were paid for out of gala funds. The Perkins Grant money, the grant for promoting adolescent health, and then under human resources, the aid teachers that are essential office because they're not assigned specifically to a school. And then finally, the business office reduction and there's backup for that also. So, other than the items on this page, there were no other changes to all of the budget information we gave you at the first reading. So, now that you've had a chance to look at all of that and look at this, um, if you have any questions, we're ready to answer them.
So, first, could I just say, um, thank you for getting the answer. I, I had thrown these out thinking, okay, just so you know what I would ask tonight.
Yeah, sure.
And it was really great when you came back with a, such a quick responses. So, thank you because that gave me more time to think about it. But it, so we have a net loss in school choice, a million plus, right? So, we get school choice money that we can spend, which is great, but we are losing two million, right, two...
Right.
Oh, so here, I guess one question partly made me think we really, we could resurrect our, um, executive committee or, or public relations committee or whatever we can do to keep as many kids in the district as possible. But if we even kept those kids in district, would we have the space to educate them? Are we at the max at this point?
Well, in the elementary schools, we are, and at the middle school, at the high school, we're not.
Okay.
Um, the high school, we would be able to keep, you know, more students. But if you look at one of these graphs, in one of these numbers is the graph of school choice. And if you see, it's pretty much leveled off
Yeah.
for the last two or three years.
No, that's great.
So, the goal was with the STEM Academy, the Honors Academy, the Academic Learning Initiative, all of those things were to try to say, "You don't need to go somewhere else to get what you need."
Yeah.
"We have it here." Uh, I mean, today I was able to send you the, the, um, little video of the band. I know having a band at McKay has been one of the things that you've wanted to happen. Well, it's happened.
Mm-hmm.
Each one of those things takes not only the finances, but takes the energy, finding the right person to do it and then building it up.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's been our goal is try to provide the best we can so that we can honestly look at a parent and say, "Whatever your child needs to get a good education here and succeed, we can deliver. We will deliver." And to the point where, and if you're an eighth-grade parent right now, your child will have a Chromebook next year and their learning will be on, on the Google Education platform. Things like that. Um, I remember when we were losing students to lacrosse, five or six years ago. People were calling me and saying, "Somebody's not going to the high school and the only reason they're not going is because they're going to another district to play lacrosse." Guess what? We started a lacrosse team. So, you know, that's the kind of day-to-day, uh, attention that we've had to pay. And we finally, over the last few years, really leveled that off. The goal would be, like you're saying, uh, let's try to turn it around now.
Yeah.
So, this is not sort of, well, it's pertinent to the, to the budget, but I have to say, I, I... This is a really rich document and it's going to take me more than the, you know, three days between Friday and Monday to really fully absorb it. But the one piece that I really feel like I read that was in neon lights to me, that I never had really seen or considered, but that you did a really thoughtful job of presenting, was the group homes. The group homes, the fact that there are twelve of them in Fitchburg. And so, we've got these kids living here who didn't grow up here and who are not living with their families and who are in our schools. And it was, it was, uh, it was really eloquent, you know, that they're there, but also with the high costs, you know? This, I, I was telling someone, um, I was telling somebody, I was telling a journalist today about, you know, Fitchburg and urban districts...
and urban districts, that we have, we get the least amount of attention from the state and federal government, yet we have the most expensive children to teach. And so here are all these groups. I had no idea we have 12 group homes in Pittsburgh. That, that's a lot of kits. And then my first thought is, well, can we get pets over to them? But, you know, the, the fact that they're there, that they're in our community, uh, that's a huge responsibility. I don't, I don't believe there are group homes in Ludenberg. Not, not that I know of.
We have eighty-seven beds and they're slated to have forty more in the fall.
And these children are ages?
Thirteen to twenty-two.
Okay.
And fifty percent of the beds are actually not assigned to the North Central DCF. They're, they're open to students from across the state.
Yeah.
Twenty-two years of age?
Well, that, if they, if they're a student with disability.
Yeah.
They can be in school till they're twenty-two, correct?
Well, and Paula was telling me that three group homes closed on Cape Cod in the last month or so. So they're actually, in a lot of areas, there were fewer. When I, when I was on the Cape, the Cape Cod was the fifth largest, had the fifth largest homeless population because it had all of the motels. So that in September, the tourists were gone and the state would, you know, fill the hotels with.
Two years ago, the governor really pushed DCF to, uh, close the motels. But there physically are insufficient numbers of beds for DCF there.
Can I just say, just, just if people are watching. I was looking, you know, what you, this part of the budget document, um, where we look at MCAS results and, and you look at percentages. I, I mean, I think it's important to just note that, so Massachusetts is the number one state in the country for performance, right? And we know all the issues that we have in Pittsburgh and we are comparing percentages from our school district to the state. And like I just opened it up to South Street, right? And comparing reading and math and English at third and fourth grade. It's not even fifty percent of the state that is getting, meeting or exceeding expectations. In the number one state in the country.
Mm-hmm.
Less than half at the state, and I want you to imagine every state district out there, right? The very wealthy communities. Somebody asked, they're like, make this, change the cognitive dissonance here or the disconnect that people have. Because there's something at issue here with the mechanism of testing.
Yeah.
I think that that's.
And they're trying, they're, they've made some progress, as we spoke of earlier. But we had a lot, because the superintendent's organization, especially the urban superintendents, we have been pushing for change on this. We've been crying this for years and years. And it was on deaf ears. And it's just this year that even, for, for example, the churn rate. I remember Mary Bork, a good friend of mine, superintendent in Chelsea. Eight years ago, she did her doctoral dissertation on the churn rate in the urban, in the urban districts and presented it to the Department of Education and said, you need to look at this. People coming and going, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out that's going to have an impact on student achievement in that city. It's taken them eight years to even acknowledge it.
It's just so frustrating that we have to live with that stigma.
Right.
And hopefully, we're getting rid of the stigma, right? But it's just that, that legacy is hard to.
Well, I think that's why, you know, and that's what I do every day. You have to bring it down to the individual student. If I don't bring it down to the individual student and if I live up here in the percentages, you won't come to work every day. You have to go, and that's what a teacher does, right? And their 25 students in their classroom, they have to think about each student in that classroom and getting them. Here's how, where they come, here's where they are. You do that, you're a teacher.
Yeah.
And here's where I have to get them. It's the same thing at the macro level of central office. We have to keep doing things to get back into the individual student, the individual student. What do they need to succeed? And thirteen years ago, we had very little for the students who were ready to do more.
Right, yeah, that's been a great change.
Very little.
That's been a great change.
And now we have a lot.
Yeah.
You know, uh, so each one of those things took a concerted effort on the part of developing curriculum and then developing, you know, leadership in the schools that would foster it. And then developing the relationship with the school committee that would say, that's worth funding. Yes, keep that in the budget. We will not cut that from the budget. And again, for I don't know how many years in a row, probably four, five, I'm here bringing you a budget with no reductions, with no cuts. And keeping all of those programs, music, advanced academic learning, Honors Academy, STEM Academy, all of those things, a hundred percent in place. Middle school sports.
Make sure you get that.
All of it.
Reported accurately to Elizabeth. Not that you wouldn't, I'm not, I don't mean to insinuate, no. But make sure you put that in the paper, huh?
I'll get off my soapbox.
But Friday night at graduation, I talked to a young lady who used to be on a committee and she just completed her first year at Harvard. And her sister, her sister graduated Friday night, is going to Boston University. And her youngest sister will be going into her sophomore year in the Honors Academy.
Wow, that's a perfect example.
Yeah.
And they're, it's a Hispanic family.
Yeah.
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 We've given that family incredible opportunity and an incredible way to maximize their, because it was all there, right? Clearly, the academic ability was all there. All of those things were there. And this school district and this city gave that family an opportunity to take it and run with it and support it, which is fabulous.
Excellent.
So I think we're at, so then you have some policies. One of them is going to go back to your next policy subcommittee meeting, but there are policies here that are ready to be acted upon. There's a smoking policy for deletion, a non, no smoking policy for deletion. Part of the process was identifying policies that were out of date or that were duplications in the policy handbook. The home instruction policy is here for first reading. And then there is a, you have, uh, in your packet, the MOU that we've worked on for the resource officers. Thank you, Chief Martino, put a lot of work into that. We reviewed it at the policy subcommittee meeting and we developed a policy to support the resource officer MOU. And that policy is called the Relations with Police Authorities. And it is a first reading of that. So all of these are first readings except for two, which are deletions. And the one on nondiscrimination is, will go back to the subcommittee.
Does the committee wish to bundle the action items?
Make a motion to bundle the items?
Yep.
Second motion made, seconded. We'll take action items eighteen dash one zero zero five up through and including eighteen dash one zero two eight. I hear a motion.
Make a motion.
Motion made to accept.
Second.